Kirkpatrick, motion to discuss.
Move to discuss.
Second? Is there a ... oh, okay, you did, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, discussion's open. Go ahead.
We don't want to vote no.
Go ahead, Ms. Balance, you start it.
At the last meeting, we spoke about year-end balance sheets that didn't balance. And one of our colleagues mentioned that it didn't seem to be a problem with the auditors. And we decided that perhaps they weren't looking at the specific years and checking back to see whether, in fact, the balance sheets that balanced at the time no longer balanced, for whatever reason that may be. There have indeed been some problems with our audits for the past several years. And some of those things are being brought into compliance and perhaps others are not, or perhaps I'm just not aware that they are being brought into compliance. But the software, accounting software we're using now is apparently rather ancient. There are there are accounting software programs that are much more up to date. If I understand correctly, there are also some that are tamper-proof. In other words, you can't go back in and change it later. So, in light of all that, I'm still interested in perhaps getting a new software, accounting software program for our finance department with all that will entail. Also, at that point, I'm interested in trying to figure out how we can back up the old accounting software program so that we'll have that basis to build from. So, I'll move to have either our city clerk treasurer or the finance director research a new accounting software program for the finance department. That was a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion being made and seconded to research, and Ms. Clerk, research the the process, is that correct, and descriptions and all the minimal items to go with it for the first meeting in July? Okay, go ahead. We still have a motion, so we'll take that in a second.
I did do some research already on one software. Ms. Balance, I'm not sure how you mean that the software is manipulative and unable to be manipulated or any way. I have to have paper trails in order to change anything in my software or in the software. This is March, or I'm sorry, this is April's journal entries that I have documents for to provide to the auditors when they come in. They look at all my journal entries when they do the audit. My balance sheets, when I was trying to lessen some codes that we no longer use in the 2011 budget, which I shared with y'all when we first started budgeting, didn't realize that it changed how it presented on the balance sheets. Everything is in balance up till today. I do have trial balances and the balance sheets that I give to the auditors each time. They are always in balance when we do our audits every year. I have the 2008, 2009 audit, legislative audit here, that the finance department was in compliance without any deficiencies in regards to the financial laws. Now, as far as software, I did look into one particular company, which is the Centerpoint Fund Accounting. Last year, I looked into them. They were on, they only did, I think, accounts payable, general ledger, and possibly payroll. They did not include our business licenses, software that we have in the database downstairs. To change to this software program with three users, you're looking at, with tax, sixteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Sixty or sixteen?
Sixteen. One hundred and fifty-five dollars. It will probably do everything that we need it to do. The software that I have downstairs is eleven years old. It is upgradable. It's updated. It it still does the functions that we need it to do. It's not able to be manipulated without a journal entry. And there isn't any way I can change a check number. There isn't a way I can change the amount of the check or the payer of the check. And so, it's I think it's, the software has an administrative function of the city. So, that's the information I have.
What was that last sentence, please?
It's the administration's function of the city, whereas we come up and ask you if we want to change, need to change our program for the appropriations of that money.
Ms. Balance?
Can you offer any insight as to why the year-end, okay, let me back up. Year-end balance sheets are generated when you, when a finance department, for instance, closes out the books for the year, yes?
Yes.
At that point, it should balance, right? A balance sheet should balance-
Correct.
-when you close out the books for the end of the year. Can you offer any insight as to why, for the past several years, the balance sheets don't add up?
I just explained that to you a little while ago, that I went and removed, inactivated some of the line items that we had used previously in order to lengthen or shorten the presentation of the budget report. So, those in totals did not show up on the balance sheets that I had given to you.
The re-initiation of those.
Then how, then how could people go back through the years to each year and find out what, if you will, snapshot of that particular moment in time was, if it's constantly in flux?
It's not constantly in flux. It just was in this particular instance.
For five years, six years?
No, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I had done this in the 2011, it affected the balance sheets that I had given to you. If I go down and print out the balance sheets right now for 2000 through 2000, 2005 through now, it will be in balance with the trial balance, with the general ledger.
Then, then why do the balance sheets I got not add up? I, I'm not understanding-
I just explained that to you.
-how it can be, it can be in balance at the end of the year, and then it's out of balance, and then it's back in balance again. That seems rather odd to me.
Okay. So, she's, she's tried to explain it. The system's set up in such a way that, that you can deactivate certain, am I correct, deactivate certain-
You can inactivate.
Inactivate or deactivate, whichever. She was told by, I think, these, the hardware of the software company that if you reactivate those, I don't, I don't know, so-
We went back and, I reback-
It would balance it up.
I inact, I inactivated them, and then I went back and activated them, and everything is fine now on the system. So, it's, not the system was what I did in Jan, in January. Or whenever it was.
Mr. Powell, I believe you're next, sir.
Clerk, question, are we in discussion of a motion, or are we just in discussion?
Well, she, she was offering up why the balance sheets were, were out of balance, and it was pretty simple. She reactivated two, or a couple of issues, and it's now balanced. There again, we're still, yes, we still have a motion to have Ms. Clerk and go and check prices and descriptions of different software programs if they said want to be changed, somebody wants to change it. Hang on a second. Did, was that answered to your questions, sir? Okay, thank you.
I'll wait for my motion.
I think I can help explain this-
Go ready.
-because I get it. Ms. Balance, easily, she, what she did was to decrease the paperwork that she gave you. She took a shortcut, and she went in and just moved some inactive material out to move, to make it shorter, to save paper, basically. And then, that made it look like there was something missing.
Sure did.
But there's not something missing. If you go down now, am I saying it right, Yvonne?
Nothing's missing, it's all there.
Nothing's missing, right. If you go down now and let her print it out in its totality, it's all there. And you'll get all the pages, plus the things that weren't necessary, that she was just trying to save paper.
Okay.
Since we have on the agenda to set up a workshop for the budget process, I would go along with recommending that the city clerk look into prices of software, but that we move this into the budget workshop arena instead of at this table for the time being. However, we can do that.
Okay. We still have the original motion to deal with. And it has been seconded. Somebody want to draw the motion?
We do repeat this.
Well, that was just to-
Our place.
Ever do.
A motion was made to have either the city clerk treasurer, the finance director, look into costs and type of software programs, and Dr. Kirkpatrick seconded.
Ms. Balance?
It still concerns me that we have a software program that is easily manipulated at will. That bothers me. It's, to me, a city should be accountable year by year, every year. We should be able to look back at the records and find out exactly what happened every year. And that's my concern, and that's why I'm bringing this forward. And that's why I'm hoping that, that the council will agree with me, that we, I'm not asking to micromanage. We're not even managing, let alone micromanaging.
Okay, back to the original-
I would hope that this, I would hope that the city council would agree with me that we definitely need to have some oversight, some accountability. And hopefully, a new software program would help us move into the realm of that.
Okay, the original motion still stands. Unless that motion wants to be withdrawn. The person that made it can withdraw it.
I'll amend my motion to say that it would be the city clerk treasurer who does this research.
Okay, that, that was already done. That was part of the motion, the original motion. Mr. Powell, you came back with a nu-
It was in, or in the original.
Okay. You came back and wanted to-
I didn't have a problem with the motion. I was just recommending, however, you know, in supporting that motion-
Okay.
-that we then roll that action-
Okay.
-into the date that we have workshop-
You didn't want to change that to part of the budget workshop? Okay, we're back to the original motion then?
No, I did want to change it-
Okay.
-to the workshop.
Motion been made and seconded to have the clerk check on programs and prices. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Four one, okay. Motion carried. All right, so we do not add it to the workshop. Number six is Black Bass Dam update, that's mine. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The dam hasn't changed. It's, it's still as, as ready-looking and leaking as it has been. This new incident has taken kind of our focus away from that, for now. But while this, this slide was going on, the second foremost thought in my mind, this could have been the dam. This could have been the dam, just as easy as that slid off the hill. There again, Dee Perkypile is staying on top of it. He stays in touch with me on a weekly basis. In fact, I spoke to him today. Or he spoke to me, I didn't get a chance to call him back. It's, as status quo as it is right now, it's, it's in bad shape. So, we're gonna have to come up with some money ideas to fix it. I don't think fake sales is gonna get it. Mr. Powell?
Has anybody looked into any available grants at all, whether historic or-
Dee's researching that also, I believe, I think that was the understanding that we had with him. He, he deals with this thing on, mainly in Texas. I don't think he's, I don't think he is licensed in Arkansas for this particular issue. Granted, he, he will give us free information, as free as we can get it from him, which we greatly appreciate. Don't get me wrong, Dee, I love you, man. But it's gonna be up to us to find some money to get some folks up there to start working on it.
Works.
Yeah, so, we, we check daily for grants through the feds and through the state, and you know how tight everything is right now, so. And it, it's right now is not considered an emergency through FEMA or even the state at this point, while everything else that's sliding off the mountains, sixty-two, twenty-three, and now ours, is taking precedence over it. Also, there is a FEMA FEMA workshop, I guess you wanna call it. They'll be here Tuesday. Oh, no? Okay, it's not a workshop. They'll be here Tuesday to hear complaints and, I guess, file claims. Yeah. Yeah. It'll be Tuesday in the courtroom upstairs at ten o'clock. So, anybody that wants to attend should be informative. And we'll be there pounding our fist, we want money. We want money. Okay, and that's the best I can tell you.
Tuesday, the-
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, what is the date, the seventh?
Yeah. It's the day the second, yeah, seven. Okay, any further on that one? I'm sorry, ten o'clock, yeah. It'll be upstairs in the courthouse. Should be a well-attended meeting. Dog control workshop date? Oh, okay. Not only any good chance to address yet. It'll be gone next week. Yeah, we don't, we don't have a date set up yet, but let me, let me work on it. We'll get with y'all Monday or Tuesday next week. Mr. Powell?
Can we make sure that it's set up when we don't have two other commissions meeting right after us, where we can-
We'll try to schedule it, that time is convenient for everybody. Less intrusive that way, okay?
No dog piles.
Be what?
No dog piles.
There you go. The land bank ordinance is next on the issue, motion to discuss?
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let me find everything here. Come on in, guys. All right. Everyone should have received a ordinance from Parks. And there again, it looks like some of the colors were indicated as to what, what had been tweaked, is my understanding, so I'll let Bill and, oh, there he is, Bruce, address this issue.
Well, if, if I could, we've got a very slightly revision of the revision I'd like to pass out. Just a couple of things have been tweaked and reworded, nothing major. But this is the latest and greatest rendition.
Do y'all have this one? Everybody here?
Five nineteen?
I just forwarded it today, so maybe what you have would be great.
There's eight of them, right there. And yes, I believe everything you see in blue is, is something you have not seen before until this afternoon.
So, you understand all the blue is additional?
The tweaks, I guess, yeah.
That's just, this is all additional.
That's, is that correct?
Yeah, what's in blue is the only thing that's different than what you saw last time. This, am I saying that clearly enough?
Is it additional, or is it a change?
Most of it's additional, yes. For instance, what you saw before did not have section four. And you only had a total of, I believe, ten sections, and now you have eleven as a result of that. Is that right? Yeah. And the biggest change, obviously, is that, that whereas at the top of the first page.
Any discussion? Ms. Balance?
See here in this first, this whereas that it's been added, funds resulting from the sale of city properties that are of no value to the city. Who would be in charge of determining if property was of no value to the city? And what criteria would they use to determine that?
You want me to answer that?
Yeah. That would be the Land Bank Committee. Obviously, ultimately, the, the decision's city council's decision. But it would be the recommendation of the Land Bank Committee. And as far as what criteria is used, that would vary from property to property. But to, you know, give you a, for instance, if we had a unplatted street that, in our determination, our being the Land Bank Committee, their determination would never be used by the city, never has been used by the city, is of no use to the city now or ever. However, it did have value to a, an adjoining neighbor. It had value to them, it could be sold, that money put in the land bank, and used to help buy the property adjacent to Magnetic Spring. Or help us buy a property that helps us connect two pieces of trail for an in-town trail or something of that nature. Again, the whole intent of this is to convert land that is not of use to the city into cash, and then to take that cash and to go buy land that is of use to the city. And I hate to overuse the example, but, you know, we're, we're working pretty intensely on an in-town trail system, an urban trail system, and it's real tricky making some of these connections. And if we have the ability to buy little parcels from time to time, it, it really makes it a lot easier for us to accomplish that.
It concerns me a lot that if I understand correctly, we're, we're going to be trying to buy property to be under the purview of Parks? Is that the way, am I understanding correctly? That the, the lands purchased with the land bank funds will basically be under the direction, under the purview, under the control of Parks?
Yeah, I think that's a fair assessment. I mean, much the same as Magnetic Spring is now, or the land that is being used for in-town trails currently is.
Well, the reason that concerns me is because as we know, the public land belongs to the people. And we're being told right now, we're just getting ready to discuss, we're, we're being told that the elected governing body of this city has no control over what Parks does with any of the property that is under their control. So, I'm in some ways very much in favor of a land bank. I'm in some ways very much not in favor of the people losing control of more and more of their property. So, that's my concern.
You should have been there.
The land is under control of the Parks already, so-
What land?
Excuse me. Any land that would be sold is under the control of the Parks. The green spaces, they've, it's been designated to be controlled by the Parks Department. It does have to come before council for purchase or sales. So, the ultimate authority rests with council to purchase or to sell property. But somebody has to inventory this property, somebody has to take care of this property, somebody has to make use of this property. And that's a responsibility of the Parks Service, because we've got our, we're a legislative body. We don't, we're not landlords. We don't oversee property, we don't take care of the property, and that is what Parks is all about. So, the initial property is under the control of the Parks already. So, basically, it's just swapping one piece of property for another. We have property that through the bequeaths of people in the community has ended up in the hands of the Parks. Platted streets that are no longer, or never were, streets fall under green spaces of which Parks has authority over. We've designated that to the Parks. So, land that doesn't serve a useful purpose as compared to insulating our reservations, our springs, our recharge areas to complete voids in the trail systems, those are the important pieces of property that Parks would like to acquire so that they're useful to the community, so that the community can enjoy them. So, we do have the authority when it comes to the purchase or the sale of the property. But the control of the property rests with Parks. So, it's in the hands of the people, it's in the hands of the Parks Commission, so that's in the hands of the people of Eureka Springs as one of the commissions.
Mr. Powell, you have your hand up?
I'm very much for this land bank proposal. The, the one thing that bothers me, and it's, and it's pretty well covered in the Parks and Recreation part of the city code as far as that they can't just go out and sell property on their own. What, what seems to happen is if we have this as a separate ordinance all by itself, that things tend to get ignored. If you go and say, okay, we're looking at Parks and Recreation segment in the code. What I would like, to make a long story short, I'd like to see this rewritten with paragraphs in chapter twelve of the city code. Where it's there, you can pull out the code, and you can find out everything that Parks and Recreation is responsible for. And oh, by the way, here's the land bank subchapter.
Any further?
Taking, taking the verbiage the way it is and putting it into that chapter.
Mr. Weaver?
That's a codification matter that would be handled by our coding service. They put the numbers and they place them in the code. You don't have to tell them where you, unless you just specifically want. They're gonna put this probably either in a separate complete chapter, or they'll attach it directly to the Parks chapter. But they, they determine the number when you give them the ordinances. It's not gonna be a standalone ordinance that wouldn't appear in a future codebook. That's part, that's part of what you pay a coding service for, and that's part of what, where our codebooks come from, is, is the ordinances go in and are codified by that service, and they, they would place them in the appropriate place.
We're, we're doing that now with the FAL ordinance, the dog ordinance. We're going in and we're amending chapter paragraphs. I see no reason why we couldn't specify if, you know, the last chapter under Parks Commission, just as an example, is twelve point oh four oh six. Why this couldn't become part of either that chapter or under Parks? Why this couldn't become part of either that chapter or under Parks? And that way, we know it's gonna be under chapter 12 going in.
Ms. DeVito.
Well, I, I think we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves here. It's been our procedure that any ordinance that comes before us passes through the city attorney's hands, and I'm speculating that this hasn't gone through the city attorney yet with the revisions that are in blue.
Not the most recent revisions. You probably believe Tim is saying that.
So, we've got to go through that procedure before we can move on it, and I would, would like that to be the case, that, that we have it go to the city attorney, and that he then maybe dots an eye or crosses a T or something like that, and brings it back to us, and then once, once we pass an ordinance, then it can be put into code.
Pennell.
Make a motion that we postpone this until the first meeting in July, so the city attorney can review it.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to postpone and let Mr. Weaver go through it. Have it for the next meeting, or the first meeting in July, is that correct? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bruce.
Are you gonna hang around for the Parks Project discussion? I wanted to chase you down. Number nine, the addition we made earlier in the agenda setting, is the Park Project Discussion, the Basin Park Project Discussion, along with Mr. Weaver's opinion on the autonomy of the Parks. Motion to discuss?
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. DeVito.
As we left the meeting at the last time, the request was that we get a written opinion from the city attorney, so that we understood our position as per Parks, and we have now received that opinion. It's pretty much straightforward that it is the Parks purview as per Arkansas law, and that they have full authority over any construction, reconstruction, extending, equipping, improving, operating any project. The Parks Commission shall have full and complete authority with respect to the project and its operation. Parks and Recreation Commissioners have full and complete charge of the Parks, and shall have full and complete authority to build, manage, operate, maintain, and keep in good state of repair any municipal property or real property to carry on a recreation park. So, it's pretty forward and pretty concise that it's not our purview to, in any way, influence Parks' operation, so I think that's pretty much a done deal.
Ms. Pennell.